Good evening, the hour being after five o'clock. It's my pleasure to call the 2024 School Committee Public Budget Hearing to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everyone for braving the elements tonight. Let's look out there. We are going to start off with a comprehensive budget overview with Mike, then we will move into goods and services and personnel. And then there will be an opportunity at the end for citizens' comments if anybody would like to make them. So, Mr. Frishat, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I'm on the comprehensive budget, for those of you who have your budget books with you.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to make a motion to open the public here.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Gallivan, second by Mr. Buckley. Opposed in favor. Opposed, abstain.
No, official.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sorry.
Okay. So, I'm going to walk down through our comprehensive budget, which gives an overarching look at our budget, starting with personnel and then moving into goods and services. So, I'll start with FY '24. Our FY '24 budget for personnel, the adjusted personnel budget, which included new positions, was forty-six million, three eighty-nine, eight eighty-one. And this year's budget increase is to forty-seven oh nine oh, forty-seven million, ninety thousand, which is an increase of seven hundred thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars, or one point three one percent of our total budget. For those of you who follow our budget in the past, that's a very low number for our personnel increase. And as we've discussed in prior budget meetings, that is due to a large attrition number that we had this year that we are utilizing to keep our personnel number deflated going into next year. So, we're fortunate to have that, that is very uncommon for a number that low. Having said that, on the goods and service front, we, in our FY '24 budget for goods and services, we had seven million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And our request this year is eight million, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which represents a one million, seven hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollar increase, which is a substantial increase, which we'll get into as we move through the budget process and the principals and the directors talk about their budgets. It will become clear that a lot of this is associated with special ed, but we'll better define that as this meeting goes on. And that represents a three point two percent increase for the goods and service budget. So, our combined school budget request for next year for FY '25 totals the increase of two million, four hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars, which represents a four point five percent increase. Again, I go back to that lower personnel number. With the normal personnel number that we've, or traditional that we've had in the past, we would be much closer to the mid-sixes if that was what we were facing. Fortunately, we are not. So, our total request for the school department for FY '25 budget, including both personnel and goods and services, is fifty-five million, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The town administrator is currently recommending a budget of fifty-five million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars, which represents a four-hundred-and-five-thousand and eighty-two-dollar differential between us and the town administrator. Having said that, there's an asterisk next to that number, and there's a footnote down at the bottom of the comprehensive, which represents kind of a, an agreement between the school department, the town administrator, that in the fall town meeting, an additional two hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars would be appropriated to our budget. So, not in the traditional spring town meeting, but in the fall town meeting. That would leave us with a remaining balance, a gap of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and two dollars, which is noted again at the bottom. It's a little confusing because of the way we're doing this between two town meetings, but I think it's pretty clearly defined if you have this document. So, that is the local appropriation for our request for the school department. Are there any questions before I move on into the reimbursements?
Mrs. Gallivan.
Was there an updated version of this, Mike? Because I'm not sure that my personnel numbers match yours.
Okay.
Mine, it was as of January fifth. Is that what I should be working from?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you have a net difference of four hundred and five thousand, oh eighty-two with an asterisk next to it?
Yes, at the, at the bottom I do.
Okay.
It was, it was higher up when you were doing the personnel that didn't seem to be matching. Was the difference there eight hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars?
Yes.
It was, yeah, before the adjusted.
Okay, then, then it's my mistake.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment about the, just with the two forty-two, it's just important to note that that's if the leases go through. So, we need to keep that in mind because if something happens and the leases don't go through, I think some of the ques, one of the questions we'll have to ask, does that put us at a larger deficit if we do not get that money at fall town meeting? I know there was consensus, but what if it doesn't happen? Because we have to wait until leases are signed.
And those negotiations are currently going on with Johnson Middle School. Town administrator and myself are meeting with tech tomorrow, and we met with BIKO last Friday to kind of refine those discussions, but it's still in negotiation stages. Okay, so if there are no questions, I'll move down to section B. Oh, I'm sorry.
After you, Mike, what's the timeline, do you think, of that? Obviously before town meeting?
I think we've had some positive progress in that the architects are involved and they're designing specific spaces for both collaboratives. So, that progress that we need to see and, and a realistic timeline of when the tech, the collaboratives need to be in that building to start next school year, that's all being kind of refined and worked out. So, we're in the later stages of negotiation.
Obviously, we probably wouldn't want to approve any budget in a final fashion. Bring the town meeting, without knowing that funding source is secure. Thanks for all the work on that.
You're welcome. Okay, so on the section B of reimbursements, the first section is our circuit breaker. This year, we are expecting two million, four hundred and seventy-five dollars as compared to last year's circuit breaker number, which was one million, six sixty-one, eight twenty-seven, which is an increase of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. And those are reimbursements for students' tuitions mostly, that the town receives. Once we clear the threshold of approximately fifty-one thousand, the town will receive, or the school department will receive a circuit breaker reimbursement, seventy-five percent above that threshold for those dollars. But every dollar leading up to that fifty-one thousand threshold, we pay fully with no reimbursement. So, that's a circuit breaker mechanism to help mediate or moderate the growth of tuitions in our budget for special ed. The next line down is circuit breaker carryover. So, as we've done since COVID, and we've received Essar funding, and we're able to start to save some money when possible, the school department and school committee, under their direction, have asked us to accumulate this reserve, which we start to refer to as reserve now, to weather more challenging times, which honestly, looking at our budget is now, for this year and for next year. So, the carryover balance was a million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven oh three. That is inflated by two hundred thousand dollars. That was carried over, that was for, intended for the Plumpton Building HVAC. So, the actual balance right now in circuit breaker is one million, five eighty-five, seven oh three. The reason I have the seven eighty-five, one million, seven eighty-five, is because that's what's actually in the financial system, and I wanted to unfold disclosure, disclose what is in our financial system. But two hundred thousand, again, is for HVAC and Plumpton Building. Moving on to Medicaid reimbursement, this is a new update that I have that unfortunately we received within the last week or so, from one of our special ed staff members who is responsible for Medicaid reimbursements. And the formula that goes along with that is very complex. It's federal funding from the federal government for medical-related services that we are reimbursed for yearly. And unfortunately, I had it budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand, we received approximately that this year. Next year, that's going to be declining to three hundred thousand. And that is in part a result of services that were provided during COVID, nursing services and things of that sort, that were eligible for reimbursement are no longer eligible or eligible at a lesser amount. Again, the formula is pretty complicated, but that's kind of a higher level view. So, what that means to us is that hundred and fifty thousand deduction means that we have to take a hundred and fifty thousand worth of salaries and move them back into the operating budget. So, it can no longer be supported by Medicaid funding from the federal government, which increases our need by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was not included in the figures I talked about above, because we just weren't aware of it at this juncture. So, now that is an additional amount that is on top of our hundred and sixty thousand, approximately deficit. So, it's getting us to about three hundred and ten, three hundred and eleven thousand dollar deficit as we stand right now with that update. I'm going to pause there, I would imagine there might be questions on that piece.
We can either do a flat, right?
Yeah, I just want to stop on Medicaid.
Do you have any sense that there, that that's worth trying to challenge, like, in terms of working with other districts to push back on the change in the rules, or is it?
It's, it's a federal formula.
Yeah.
It's very complicated. If I were going to push back or look for resources, and I think John and his group are starting to work on that, I would go after circuit breaker funding. And maybe the extraordinary relief, which we've talked about a bit in the past, we may be able to get some funding there, due to our, the level of increase in our budget for tuitions.
If there is such thing, again, because there's no guarantee there is such a thing.
Correct.
Okay, so my other question is, this extra hundred and fifty clearly makes our gap at least three hundred thousand now.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
McKinney Vento is reimbursement for homeless transportation, again, another federal program. We're expecting nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars coming in for reimbursement for homeless transportation this year, that we will receive next year in the fall town meeting as an appropriation. And then, moving down the list, we've recorded as offsets in section C of the comprehensive, our fees and tuitions. And if I go down the list, you'll see, I'll start with transportation. Looks like we're going to receive about twenty thousand more in transportation reimbursement there, or collections for park, for fees for the buses. That's an increase, that's favorable of twenty thousand dollars. Our athletic fees and receipts are about equivalent to where they were last year, so no real growth there, about three hundred and seventy thousand. Our boosters contribution, which is always looked about, looked at favorably by the school committee, remains at approximately three hundred thousand. That's an approximation, recognizing the contributions of our booster clubs in all sports. Our preschool current balance is a hundred and fifty-five thousand, that we're receiving for tuitions for preschool students who are peer models, these are not students with, generally with IEPs. Our extended day balance is approximately half a million dollars, reflecting a robust program for extended day, where families participate in the program and pay a fee to do that, and the balance in there is about five hundred thousand dollars. Extracurricular activities, we anticipate about a ten thousand dollar increase this year, raising it from forty thousand to fifty thousand. And our parking fee was slightly down. Those are the fees that we charge for seniors mostly, and maybe some juniors. At the high school, I think it's two hundred a spot that they pay. That money goes towards supplementing our yellow bus contract for transportation and yellow buses. So, given those totals, the total's a million, seven sixty-four for the three, for the, for that category for offsets. Any questions on the fees, tuitions, and offsets within our budget?
Mike, I'm curious why the extended day line is slightly lower? Are we seeing a dip in enrollment in extended day?
No, we're actually seeing an increase. Our staffing has gone up proportionately, so I think it may have declined initially, but I anticipate it'll continue to climb.
Okay.
Very healthy program at all four of the elementarys.
Agreed. See any other questions?
Okay, nothing else. Okay, onto the grant section. So, the grants, as I generally do at this point in the year, level fund our grants, because we just don't know, this early in the budget process, where grants will be landing or will it be settling. So, you can see as you go down the list that each one of those grants is level funded. We tend to not have dramatic increases in our grants, so level funding at this point is, is not really putting yourself out on a limb by any stretch. So, if you accumulate the entire budget, adding up all factors, so the local appropriation plus the other three categories I just covered, the total comprehensive budget for FY '25 would be sixty-three million, five hundred and forty, forty thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which is, represents a three million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars, or a five point two percent increase over prior year's budget. And that is kind of a high-level overview of our budget. Have you answered any questions?
Mrs. Gallivan.
I'm just looking at the grants, Mike. I know that you have, like, a budgeted for FY '24 column, and then you just basically carried that over for FY '25. Are those FY '24 numbers pretty close to actuals?
They are the actuals.
Perfect, thanks.
All right, start our goods and services. We'll start off with Julie Martin for preschool, and she'll also talk about, if you don't have it, you might have just got tuition fee, comps from other districts as well. So, I'll turn it over to Julie.
So, our budget, hi. Our budget will be level funded for the, for '25 year, and really, looking at it, the only major shift, I guess, is the line eighty-three, which is just for new equipment, where we had increased that line. And that's really just for, primarily for, just for furniture for the preschool, like, as, you know, for the needs of the kids, you know, this year we've invested more in things like walls, stools, different, just different seating and different types of tables. There's so much available now to meet the needs of the kids, that it's just worth kind of shifting the money into that, because we've done some of it this year, and it's, we've noticed that it really, you know, helps support the students. So, we wanted to really draw attention to that. So, that's, you know, that's primarily it. There really isn't a whole lot of other changes that are happening. I mean, our supply line is always large there, we increased that by just under four hundred, and that's really just because of the cost of everything's had to offer in construction and all those things that we tend to use a lot of at preschool. But otherwise, we're just level funded. Any questions?
Carrie, just make a comment, just to, I know we clarify this every year, but again, like, level funding is not level service. So, as, like Julie mentioned, as things go up, cost, paper, delivery, we still stay on the platform.
Did you want to talk about that? Sure. So, I've, I've pulled together, you know, comps, and I know that we have, we've talked about this in the past, and you've been supportive, but we'd like to propose a two percent increase for the, for tuition for next year, and you'll see in front of you, there's a comps of other communities around us. And without getting too far into the weeds, you know, I really tried to draw attention to programs that are comparable by the number of hours a week. There's a lot of variations of four half-days, five days, full days, half-days. So, as you can see where we are there at the top, that this is the current tuition, and then where we are, and then compared to some other districts, so twenty-two and a half hours, like, you know, where we are, fifty-eight hundred. Norwood is, you know, sixty-two, ten a year. You know, you'll see that we're really, like, in the ballpark, or even a little bit below where other communities are, that, and I really just tried to draw attention to the communities that we're, like, more, you know, comparable to. So, I think if we, if we increased it by two percent, that would bring our full-day program just up to six thousand. And our other programs, our five warnings to four thousand eighty, and our four half-day programs to thirty-four, forty. As far as, like, our families that, in, this is for all of our peer families, so not our special education students, but our tuition-paying peer families, they have, it hasn't deterred in the past, our application pool, it hasn't been a concern. We're the midst of our peer applications right now, that's closed, we're, we're going to do a lottery, you know, this week and next. And I've all, and I've put the caveat in the materials that the tuition, you know, is subject to change, and just like program hours are always subject to change based on the needs of the kids and with special education needs. So, I think even with the two percent increase, we would still be in line, or even a little below where the communities around us are. And still making it, you know, a great school for kids to, for families to send their, their children to, not, you know, out of reach.
Questions or comments?
Three member chair, what's the revenue offset of that? Two percent increase, do you know? Like, how much are we going to get?
I mean, I would add two percent to the hundred and fifteen, or a hundred and fifty-five that we have on there, that'll give you a rough approximation.
Two percent of a hundred and fifty-five.
A hundred and fifty-five, which is the revenue we anticipate collecting.
Not much.
To calculate the number of families. I can get that to you.
We're not, we're not getting a swimming pool.
We're not, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think to, to that point, I, I appreciate doing it in this fashion, as I said a bunch of times before then. I'd rather regularize than whack people with a six percent every couple, like, three or four years.
Yeah, I guess that's my, my follow-up question to that is, how do we see ourselves going forward with tuition increases? Do we expect, like, a standard two percent hike over the next several years, or?
I think just, and this is, you know, I think where I rely on, on Mike, you know, and Bridget, and my job alike, and John, of course, but it seems like, you know, other communities were all adjusting. So, I would think, Carrie, that that would be, you know, reasonable to expect that.
I mean, one of the driving factors here is the cost of living in the collective bargaining, right, that goes up every year. And as you try to help families by not increasing it, you're setting yourself back budgetary-wise and sustainability-wise. So, we thought, I think Billy summed it up well, it was like regular, smaller incremental increases, rather than waiting three years and then it's got to be a six percent to keep pace. We thought that this would be a more responsible way of increasing tuition to a slower rate.
Do we have a sense at all of that, if, whether or not these comparable programs are increasing in a similar manner, like, steady increments every year?
Everybody seems to be doing it a little bit incrementally. Some communities are kind of doing the jump that we did, like, they haven't changed in a while, now they're looking at, you know, we're all kind of looking at each other. Some people are, you know, some communities are doing it incrementally, and some have been somewhat static and haven't changed too much. And then some of those really large cities that I didn't put on here because we're not comparable, they steadily increase, like, year after year after year. So, we're right there, kind of in the mix. I think doing it two percent seems like, I think, what everybody's kind of moving to, because just, you know, the cost of, you know, materials and so on.
And that seems pretty standard for private programs, like, a small increase every year?
Yes, yes.
Based on my experience. Okay, any other questions? Mrs. Gallivan.
Yeah, just a few thoughts. One is, I'm pretty sure I heard on the news today that the governor's budget is planning on including help for families to provide for preschool.
Yes.
You know, I think there's a financial threshold, but I think that's a good thing, too. You know, the fact that, that if, if any, well, first of all, I know that we, that we have some help for families that present a financial need, but I think that there also is something coming in the governor's budget. So, that's a good thing. I think the other thing that we've heard here is just that the severity of the special needs kids that you're dealing with is getting more and more extreme. So, for that reason, total program probably has increased needs. And I guess the third thing is, when you mentioned the fact that you wanted to increase the furniture budget, it's, it's such little money, and I'm just saying it because this is a public hearing, that, you know, in order to get that, what was it, extra two thousand dollars, you took it out of, you know, your tech supplies, your equipment repair, it was all just a give and take within a budget, just to level fund. So, I think you're being extremely responsible in terms of spending, so. I mean, I think it does make sense to not, to not be unpredictable about the increase, so I think it's a good idea.
Given the timing of the lottery and families receiving information about registration for next year, I think it would move us to put this on the agenda for our meeting next week for a possible vote, if everyone is okay with that.
All right, elementary, we're up.
All right, I have the pleasure to speak about the elementary budgets tonight. So, as you know, we're doing this level funded. What we do every three or five years at the elementary level is we reallocate the elementary budget. So, what that means is we take the four, the total budget of all of the four schools, which comes up to be about four hundred and seven thousand, and then we divide that by the total number of elementary school students in the district, and that was about eighteen hundred. That gives us a per pupil expenditure, and then we multiply that by the number of students in the school. So, we've done that a few times in the past, and we got to a place to where we felt like this was a good time to do it again. So, that's why you may see the budgets of all four elementary schools look different than last year's, but the, if you add them all up, it's not, it's still level funded across the elementary level. What that change looks like is an increase at Boydin of about twenty-six hundred dollars, a decrease at Elm at about two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, an increase at Fisher of about eighteen hundred dollars, and a decrease at OPR of about forty-one hundred dollars. David doesn't like the formula with that.
I was going to say, those numbers are very precise. Couldn't give him the extra dollar, Jen? I was looking at Carrie.
So, that's why you're going to look and see that, you know, those budgets aren't matching from your past. One other consistent change that you'll see across our budgets is that we have now taken Forefront, which is a tech software that organizes assessment results, and we moved that to a central line somewhere in somebody's budget, maybe Bill's budget. And now we've taken, reallocated that money to our science. Line item to buy the mystery science, science kits. It's a supplemental, it's a, excuse me, it's a consumable material that we buy each year, K to five. That, again, number will look different at each of the schools, depending on how many sections you have at each of the schools. Other than that, the only other change that you may see across all four elementary schools is that something specific to our, our schools about moving one line up to the other.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions for elementary? Mrs. Gallivan?
I think I understand what you meant. Everybody's instructional technology looks like it's lower than it had been.
Correct.
And that's because you moved it into the central.
Correct. Perfect.
That's what I thought.
Then we've taken that money and put it into the science.
Gotcha.
So, we didn't lose the money, we just reallocated it.
Okay, thanks.
Are those mystery science kits being used in classrooms or in the STEM media?
In classrooms.
In classrooms, okay. Mr. Buckley?
Three member chair. Oh, this is good, it's always good to take around with, with the line items and reexamine. I guess, I, I was just curious, I think this is well put together, but just, what is the threshold for something to come out of your four budgets and be centralized as a kind of overarching?
What is the threshold?
Like, I mean, to, to pull something out of the, the four individual school budgets and then call it a centralized. And I guess the follow-up to that would be, as we've, over the years, talked about, what is a capital expense and how that umbrella kind of overarchingly is looked at, obviously, giant capitalist now, but just kind of philosophically, I'd be interested in what, at what point do we start to shake them out of your budgets and call it just sort of overarching?
Yeah, a couple of things, though, one part of this conversation. One is that Forefront was brand-new last year, so I think we kind of brought together those funds in the beginning of the year to try to make sure we had an analysis group for the benchmark assessments, that one with the Math Learning Center curriculum. And so, the principals in preparation for this year took, prepared to keep that in their budget. As Mike and I spoke, as we took a look at it, it looked like it felt, it made a lot more sense for that to fall under assessment, because it was ultimately an analysis to afford benchmark assessments. And I think our principals were rightfully struggling
And I think our principals were rightfully struggling with the addition of consumables. We purchased consumables for our elementary science curriculum with some funds we had with the Eschler grant. And we realized that our teachers really benefited from that. We created a lot more consistency in available materials, so we didn't want to stop that, so we continued it. So I took on the assessment because it made more sense as a larger, uh, kind of district wide, uh, assessment item for me to take out of my budget and then that freed up some money for our principals to be able to start to take care of what is appropriate for those budgets, which is a consumable item, um, for them to take on under science, which has worked out that way. And that was the conversation we had with the principals and that's how it all fell into place. But, you know, it's a good question because we are, I do think there are times where our principals take on line items. Like, I remember, I think it was four years ago now, we increased our literacy budgets at the district level to support Shannon Finley so she could ensure kind of equitable resources for our for all four of our elementary schools. So we revisit this conversation as often we can. Our principals certainly let us know when they think something is a more district central item. And and we listen, hopefully. Not, we don't always agree, but we typically find what's best, the best for the kids. And this one made a lot of sense to make that change. Did I summarize that correctly?
Mrs. Galavan?
The other one that I noticed was field trips. Like, you hadn't ever had money for field trips, now you have a little bit. Is that because of like the fifth graders move up or is it something specific or is it just in general?
So I think specifically, we are looking to do a district wide, um, grade five field day.
Oh, good.
On the fields at one A.
Good.
So we're working with the local education department. That would bring all the schools together, mix the cut, mix the schools up so they get to know other students as they transition to the middle school, one middle school. So that's what for us, that plus the students from our elementary schools to that location.
Cool. Good idea.
Okay. It's very exciting to have one middle school tab in the binder.
All right, middle school. So good evening, everyone. So it is really exciting to take a look at the budget for one local middle school. So we thoroughly looked at all items to ensure that we're well equipped as we merge into one school. So a couple, um, a couple line budget line items I'd like to bring your attention to is sixty-six we'll start with. And that's really, um, our our tech software. And we work with our DLCs to really make sure that we are utilizing these resources and to have an up, um, you know, an updated, um, cost for what it will be for FY twenty-five. So it, uh, minus three pages because it's enlarged. But these are really, um, some of the tools that are that our educators have vetted successfully in the classrooms. The second, um, is our equipment leases. As we move forward, uh, line item twenty-nine is, um, an accurate update on our lease payments. And really, we've we've gotten some new models that are more efficient for the Epsens in our school that teachers have tried out and really liked. So we've updated all that information. And lastly, I think the most important, um, line to bring your attention to is fifty-three in general supplies. And this is really the consumables replacement office supplies and, uh, for students and teachers. So what we really did was, um, went through our POs and worked with secretaries to see how much, given the increase in costs that have been. But overall, in FY twenty-four, the two buildings, so, um, Bird and Johnson combined, were spending about thirty thousand dollars allocated for supplies together. And we were able to decrease that for to twenty thousand dollars for FY twenty-three approximately. So, um, overall, the the budget request for FY twenty-five for local middle school is has decreased five point five percent from FY twenty-four requests by about approximately ten thousand dollars. And that's a big overview. I don't know if you have any specific questions?
Questions for the scissors here?
I am calling it.
Yes.
You may wonder in line eighty-three why we have a new middle school, but no new equipment allocated for that. That's done through the school building committee, through the FFD, the furniture fixtures, the equipment. And for the past couple of years, right, Bill, we haven't, um, you could probably attest this too, we we haven't put in anything really for new equipment, knowing that, um, you know, this middle school is coming down the pipe. So it just looks like when you see zero, you know, why why are we putting anything in? Mark might have.
What are we doing with the equipment from the two schools, like ballot cabinets and tables? Is like, are we donating those or?
So the first step is a pretty robust process, but the first step, and Carrie and Ed can probably both speak to it, is inventorying everything that we have currently and thinking about what things we would want to bring to the new middle school. But since we're outfitting our building with brand new furniture, I think a fair amount of that older furniture will wind up at other schools if it's gonna improve what's in those schools. Um, and then the rest that's left over would be surplus. So either donated or discarded as part of the building when they remove the Bird Middle School existing one. So that pretty much covers everything. I think the technology group is excited to pull out a lot of the technology out of the existing buildings and repurpose that. So the network infrastructure switches, not Ethernet cable, more some of the equipment. Tom could probably speak to it better, but, um, nothing of real value, I think, will be discarded. It's only the things that we just have no place for anymore.
Probably about maybe half a yard soon.
Some might, yeah.
Some talents have done that.
An auction, right?
Some talents have done that.
Yeah, yeah.
We've looked into it a little bit because we know that window of time when school gets out. And we know that we can't charge, but we can possibly ask for donations, but I think that's a great way.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
The other thing I should mention, with the two collaboratives interested moving into Johnson Middle School, a lot of furniture may we may offer up what's left to them. And they are interested in some cafeteria tables and longer, more flexible types of tables. So some of that will be, uh, repurposed as well.
Anything else?
All right, high school. Mr. Ambush?
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Level funded budget again. So movement of money is between lines. Some goes up, some goes down based on what needs are. Maybe draw your attention to a couple. Line ten, for example, has increased quite a bit for math textbooks. That's for our statistics program, including, um, a set for, uh, AP stats that I'm trying to fund, um, because they're not up for a rotation yet on textbooks. Social studies, we even increased there because we are going to offer AP, um, government next year, so we need new textbooks for that. And then, uh, line nineteen is down slightly because we we bought the, um, the accounting textbooks that we needed, uh, last year. And, um, we just need a lesser amount of money for workbooks for accounting. And, uh, and new books as they as they need to be throughout the, uh, throughout that department. Line twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven all come from media. Uh, we do have a new media specialist this year. And we have been, we have sort of decreased that lot, those lines last year because we didn't have a media specialist. So she has come in and, uh, is started doing inventory and and trying to update our offerings of of the of books that are on the shelves. And so that that's a a reflection of some of that, um, that you practices. Going down to line thirty-three, the LA instructional equipment. That is to to help fund a new, uh, media literacy elective course that we will be offering next year, uh, which will then feed into journalism. So, um, you will have to take this new elective media literacy before moving into, uh, one of the journalism classes. Stop me at any point as we go, but, um, moving down the the, um, the lines at the end, which are primarily line, you know, sixty-nine, which is, uh, instructional software, uh, equipment repair in line eighty and, um, new equipment in line eighty-six, uh, along with eighty-nine, which is replacement of equipment. That those are lines that are that are combi- a combination of all my departments. So those numbers go up and down based on whether we need new equipment, whether we need to replace equipment, et cetera. But if you go into the budget itself, you will see each item that's being, um, allocated money on each of those. And the bottom line remains the same, it just got moved around from one to the other. Any questions on the high school?
Three member chair, I should know this because it's like my goal budget, but where, um, where in your budget would like the consumables from athletics be when you need to buy new soccer balls, things like that? Obviously, most of the athletic budget is personnel. And we obviously see the the fees on our revenue sheet. Your personnel will be captured there, but like when you need to buy new soccer balls.
Yeah, there's, um, there's like, uh, line fifty-two, for example, phys ed health supplies.
So it's it's wrapped into?
It's wrapped into it.
Even for like s- a- extra after school?
No, that would be more the athletic, um, budget. This is strictly for phys ed.
Is it, does that, that's house and central then?
Yes.
Okay.
The athletic budget is is separate from what what you see.
Can I add to that?
Yes, sure.
So we did in in our meeting with Stephen and met with, um, the athletic director, Ron, um, about the athletic budget and the possible, um, need to increase the fees based on, um, some of the statistics that Ron was able to give us. So with that, you know, he's created, um, a slideshow and would like to, you know, present at school committee meetings sooner rather than later on those and to answer any questions as to why, um, there's the possibility and and add to any of this, Stephen and Mike, to add some of those fees. And there's been, you know, some requests from from boosters, um, also a request of additional coaches in order to, you know, help further our athletic department. So I don't know, when when's the last time we've added fees?
Nine years.
Nine years. So i- is there time to look at it or, I mean, there's time to look at it, but then also may not necessarily be fees, it may be some other, working with some collaboratives, with smaller sports. So, um, really looking at all these and and he's done a lot of work on that. So I'd like to, um, if we could, by next school, for the next school year, we need to really dive into that and, um, get the school committee the needed information. So thanks for bringing that up, Bill.
Yeah, I think it would be very useful as to have the opportunity to see how, um, line items might be altered within the budget to meet the needs that are present now, similar to the way the principals have just explained. You know, they're level funded, but they are shifting, um, you know, funding in among different line items to meet the priorities and the needs that are current. So to to be able to hear that for the athletics department would, I think, be very useful for all of us. Mrs. Galavan?
Just a couple of things. I was I was wondering about the equipment out of Johnson and Bird. Are you gonna take some of the the desks to, I'm thinking of those those ones that are just awful for left-handed kids.
Thank you, thank you. They are, and they're just, they're just so old.
So, um.
Yeah, the pl- every desk and chair that we buy moving forward is gonna be a separate, uh, unit. We're not, we're not going with those, uh, combi- combinations, desk chairs anymore. We certainly will save them if they're better than what we have. We do need to, um, increase those separate desk chair units in each classroom as we move forward. So if there are, um, some of those available, will it will be first in line, um.
Sounds good. I was really glad to see the AP government is, you know, you've you've got the teacher trained in everything for it. So that was awesome. And I just thought, you're so detailed, and this is not just you, but like, it's good for the public to know how how careful you are with public dollars. I noticed that you have a thirty-six dollar request to buy three wireless, um, mice. And so it's it's just interesting to me how detailed you all are to to, you know, be responsible with other people's money. So thanks on that account.
I'd just like to mention while I'm talking about, um, furniture, um, we're also, we also may need some for the Platoon building based on what what goes in there. Just wanted to talk about what the surplus furniture might be used for, because if tech take a lot of their equipment with them, then we'll we'll need to replace it with something.
Could we store stuff in Platoon? And then figure out over the course of a year what we might need for desks and so forth?
Yeah, I mean, I I think we could get containers. Vertex, our, uh, project management team has offered to do containers to store things. So, yeah, we would definitely do that before throwing it out or giving it away.
But you don't want to be buying desks.
No.
Ten months after you throw it away, you know, so.
This place has got an attic, doesn't it? I'm kidding.
It wasn't not.
Oh, no, I said, we have an attic here, right?
Anything else on the high school? Okay.
Instructional technology, Carrie?
Hi, everybody. My instructional technology budget, um, goes up a very little bit, um, about three percent, mostly reflecting increases in software. And the software increases reflect two things. One is just the the inflationary costs of our software systems are going up. At the district level, our software systems tend to be our, um, our systems that we use to maintain our entire program, you know, our school information systems, our Google systems, our Microsoft systems, those kinds of things, as well as a couple of different, uh, pieces of software we use across the district in classrooms. Those all have some increase in pricing and I can't apply nine percent of a piece of software. So there's a little bit of increase with that. Additionally, with my software goes up, uh, because we're adding one more piece of software next year. It's a piece of family engagement and communication software. As you may know, with our Apogee program, we've been able to increase our communication dramatically by reaching families by cellphone, uh, by text messages and, um, by phone when we have a mass broadcast go out. And we've really increased our engagement with families that way and communication a lot. This new piece of software will let us do that at a teacher level, um, so that teachers will be able to have that same kind of communication for families. That also will enhance our translation abilities. And this new software is also to make sure we maintain our requirements for public records retention, those kinds of things. So there is some increase in my software, um, budget lines. That's line for me, that's line two and line sixteen. To offset some of that, we're rolling back a little bit some of our replenishment plan. As you may remember, we've been working long term to try to move more of our technology replenishment into the operating budget. We've been very reliant on capital expenses for, uh, capital requests for things like our switches, our access points, those kinds of things. We've been slowly trying to move more of the money into the the operating budget over the past several years. This year was not the year to do that again. So, uh, and in fact, rather, we've actually rolled back a little bit on some of our requests for doing some of that replenishment. For example, our annual set of Chromebooks that we need to buy, we were underfunded in capital with the idea that we were gonna add that in the operating budget for next year. We're rolling back on that plan. We're gonna try to do some of that funding through, um, the middle school advances and and offset it in those ways. So you'll see as you look through my lines, for example, in line twenty-five, our replacement, uh, technology, replacement equipment has actually decreased to help offset some of this.
Questions? Mrs. Galavan?
That's the one I want to understand a little bit better. What are we gonna be asking from capital budget for? If if our original request had been three hundred thousand? And are we going back to the three hundred thousand or are we gonna be asking two hundred fifty? Or is it too soon to tell?
So. We go back and forth with this a lot.
Yeah, we do. We, Tom and I have a lot of debates about about, not debates, but discussion about this. And I think Tom summed it up well, it was the idea of moving back money into our own operating budget and owning these replacement cycles. Just unfortunate that we cannot do that. So currently, I believe we have two hundred thousand in capital funding that we have set aside for our next cycle. We've been able to capitalize on the middle school for Chromebooks. And so I think I'm hopeful that we'll get that funding and that'll help take that two hundred forward. And then we would need an additional hundred thousand to fully fund another cycle of Chromebooks. So we would be looking for a hundred thousand. So we would be looking for a hundred thousand to get us to the next round of replacements of Chromebooks. So we're looking for one hundred more. If you played it out again another year, we'd be back to three hundred, because we haven't, we don't have any funding within our operating budget.
That's what I wanna, just make sure that we sort of acknowledge early on in this process, that we're trying everything we can do to be team players and, you know, to make it through what we've been told is gonna be a rough two, maybe three years. But this is one of the things, like, we'll be back to the three hundred thousand dollar request. And so long as everybody's okay with that, I just think it's important to to go on the record to say that, you know, we're doing what we can with the resources that we have because um, because we're trying to be team players, but it's, it's coming at an expense. Okay. My other question is, has the E-rate savings been applied to everything, or is there a possibility that that's gonna help us at all?
Y- yes, um in under the uh the maintenance tech, the networking, the cell communications, and a little bit of the replacement technology too. Every year, we uh purchase new access points, um and we do have in the plan, again, to do another round of access points. Uh, and the discount, the approximate forty percent discount we get from E-rate is already gone.
I saw that, I was afraid that was what you were gonna say. Thank you.
Any questions? Tom, can you um tell me a little bit more about what Talking Points is gonna give us that we don't already have?
So Talking Points looks a lot like basically chat rooms. Um, so that a teacher can, a teacher will have the ability to send out a broadcast. Right now, a teacher can send out a broadcast to families via email, right? We know that for most people, email is not really their primary form of communication. So what Talking Points will allow teachers to do is be able to have that broadcast capability, be able to send out to people's cellphones via text message or via the app to get like an app on them. Talking Points also allows for more one-on-one communication, so that parents and teachers will be able to talk back and forth as a, as a one-to-one conversation. On the phone, on the cellphone, it looks like texting back and forth, um even though teachers can use their computers to do it. Families can use their cellphone numbers and we're not sharing personal phone numbers back and forth. So it's gonna allow for a a teacher-level broadcast out, um and it's also gonna allow for more one-to-one communication. A key point that, one of the main reasons we're really willing into this, is this has really big benefits for our families that don't speak English at home. Uh, because this has built-in native uh translation. So that this gives our nurses, our ML teachers, our school offices, and classroom teachers the ability to send messages home and have them translate automatically into the families' um natural language.
That's great. I'm certainly all for anything that removes barriers to communication with our families, especially our our non-native English-speaking families. Um, where I get a little bit anxious is about eroding the barrier between professional communication and and respecting staff members' time and and working hours and not texting, I think, and or something that resembles texting can blur the, blur those lines a lot of times. I guess I'm curious, you know, is there us, are there settings where, um, is it just a a matter of like, you know, you turn off push notifications on your phone after four PM or five PM or whatever you decide as a, as a staff member, or?
There are, there are settings both on the family side and on the staff member's side about working hours and what times a day you wanna get messages. Um, if I, if I remember correctly, I think from the family side, they can choose to get a digestive messages rather than get twelve messages a day and that kind of thing, because you don't have to get them all condensed. Um, uh, so we do have that ability.
Okay. And I guess I I worry too from a, from a family perspective. We have just um, I think, run a pretty solid campaign to get everyone to download App to G and to use the app, and I find the app very, very helpful. Um, I also, I guess, worry about platform overload for families and students as well, right? Like, use App to G for this or Talking Points for that, and I'm sure I'm not saying anything you haven't considered. Um, and it's kind of the the ever-present challenge of trying to communicate in this very crowded landscape that we have now, but.
We, we went through a, a pretty strong software selection process, looked at a bunch of different pieces of software that do this type of thing. One of the reasons we really liked Talking Points is because from the parent's perspective, they don't have to use a new piece of software. Uh, the teachers can log into their system, can communicate with the families however they need to. Uh, families can just get it by the text message. They can get a text message from Mr. Reeves' class, they can get Mr. Smith's class today, don't forget tomorrow's, you know, whatever. Um, and there is an app that families can use if they like to organize it that way, but they don't have to, and they can just use the text message.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, great. Moving to special education.
Okay. Good evening. Um, so I will go through each of the lines that have changes. Um, there aren't many, but I know some of them are rather significant. So I'll start on line two, uh so that's legal service. Uh, we do use our legal service a fair amount during the course of the year. Um, but as I watch it go through this year, I I don't foresee it hitting uh the forty-four thousand mark that we allocated for this year. Um, so I think we would be very comfortable in scaling that back to forty thousand uh for next year. It is an educated guess, um, you know, and and the year could go in any direction, uh but I think we're comfortable on scaling that back for this year based, at least on what we've seen this year. Uh, the second one that has a change is line eleven, uh spent consulting expenses. Um, this is really an analysis of student need changes uh over the course of this year that we anticipated to next year. Uh, so students not needing particular services from particular vendors uh that we anticipate for next year. I'll say this is largely nursing. Um, there's a little bit in other areas, uh hearing, vision services. Uh, but the the majority of this largely would be nursing contracted services. So we have that reduction, um that all tallies up to to forty-eight thousand dollars. And then there's really no other change uh until we get down to the bottom, um which is tuitions, uh which is really the largest change. I'll go through each of the lines individually. So line forty, uh we do have a student right now um who is attending um a very unique program in one of our neighboring disti- districts. Uh, it is a real success story, and that student is graduating this year. Uh, so we anticipate that line being empty uh going into next year. Line forty-one, we have one student who currently attends a a mass-approved program in a bordering state. Uh, that student has aged out of that program and will be returning to a mass-approved program in Massachusetts. Um, uh, one of the private schools, so that tuition will move out of line forty-one and into line forty-two. Line forty-two, obviously, as you can see, is where the largest uh change is, and I think what we spend a lot of our time talking about, especially at private school tuition. One of the biggest factors here is something that we talked about, uh I think around this time last year. If you remember a cohort of of eight or nine students that we talked about last year, um this is the first time that they'll appear on the budget. Their situation's resolved after this body voted the budget last year. Uh, so I think because of that, I think that's, that's a big driver of our deficit this year. We started paying tuitions uh after the budget was voted, and now this is the first formal budget that we'll see them appear on. So it looks like a large increase in line forty-two. I think on top of that, I know we talked a lot about la- last year about fourteen percent increase. Um, what we're hearing from um the commissioner for finance, uh we're hearing about an increase this year of four point seven percent uh from OSD. Uh, so consecutive years, we have a fourteen percent increase, a four point seven percent increase. When annually, what we were used to and accustomed to was one to two percent from OSD before these past two years. So I think that's another variable uh contributing to line forty-two. And then fi- uh, finally, line forty-three, our collaborative tuitions. Um, we do have one student that's exited the district into a collaborative this year. We also have one student who will be switching from a private, um mass-private-approved school into a collaborative. Uh, so that's reflective of that increase. I think as as Mike had mentioned before, um, this is the first time in my time here that we've seriously and aggressively looked at extraordinary relief. Uh, so we do have our financial people looking and crunching numbers, um looking at our circuit breaker, um claimables, and that's sort of the variable that we look at to determine eligibility for extraordinary relief. Um, we may get there this year, so I think we'll know that a a little bit as the, as the year progresses, but it's the first time that I think we seriously thought that that we may get there. I think that is largely what I have for you. I know it's, it's not many lines, but I know it's one very significant line.
Yes, Mrs. Galvin?
I've got a couple, of course. So yeah, I was trying to understand the the whole private school tuition line and how the circuit breaker matches with it, because this isn't the full cost of the tuitions, if I'm understanding it right.
It's offset by circuit breaker.
Take the amount that's on line forty-two and essentially add circuit breaker to it to get your total for how much we're spending at private schools. Is that correct?
So we, we take our total obligations for private schools, we offset circuit breaker against it, and that's the number that appears, correct?
So the inverse of that would be add the circuit breaker to line forty-two, and you find out the total expense of private school.
Total obligation, yeah.
Yep, okay. So I get the rationale that you just explained, but I'm just trying to think of the best way to explain it to our legislators and and things like that to to sort of quantify that um to quantify in the easiest way to understand what's, what's happened over the last couple of years. And what I'm looking at is, two years ago, that total line would have been two point five million dollars. And now it's up to four point two four million dollars. So I'll put it in writing before I say anything to a legislator to make sure that you guys agree. But that's just a huge increase, huge, and I don't think that we're alone in that. I I definitely don't think that we're the only town in that vote.
So we, we were on a call uh with the um commissioner for finance last week.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he had talked about extraordinary relief. He is of the mind, the state is expecting more districts than before to apply for extraordinary relief. So I think using that as sort of a measure, they know that there's more districts that are struggling out there, just using that measure alone. They anticipate way more applications for extraordinary relief than than they had in the past.
So they're not planning on addressing it in the, in the operating budget or in their budgets? They're more planning on doing it by town by town by extraordinary relief? Is that your?
They, well, there's that. There is reserve relief that he also talked about um that that district can apply for to assist with what's going on this year.
This year?
Yeah. The problem with reserve relief is that if we apply for it and we're successful in getting it, um, it's fine, it will pay for things this year. It will be subtracted, that amount will be subtracted from next year's circuit breaker. So it's really just fronting us.
So we're better off waiting until next year, I think.
I'm not sure. I I think extraordinary relief is a more viable option for us than reserve relief.
Okay. All right, I have something else that's little. Your sped transportation. You built an increase in last year, but not for this year. Is that? Is there a reason for that?
Couple of things. Um, the commissioner also talked about transportation um reimbursement. And I know at this point, we think it's somewhere in the fifties, and I think we talked about fifty-two, fifty-seven. Um, he hinted to those of us on the call that that might go up. So we may.
So we're crossing our fingers there?
A little bit. I think the other thing is the state of transportation in our vendors right now are so unpredictable. I'm not really sure what to budget for them, because we have some parents who are transporting themselves because of the lack of availability of vendors. Um, so I I think things can change so wildly on that line. I'm, I'm not really sure what to do. I think we have to look and see how it plays out. Um, but the commissioner's statement, I think, was notable in the call last week.
And that's something that we can also bring to our legislators about, you know, a a surprise that probably a bunch of them don't even know about.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's it.
Um, Dr. Quillie, we have a meeting with the finance committee and the select board next week, and um, in our pre- in our previous meeting with those boards, uh, the question of special ed tuitions and the fact that this is sort of a, a global in our context issue um was, was really resonating. And I think any information you can provide, even if it's anecdotal, around what sort of comparable districts like ours are experiencing would be very useful for that conversation. Um, much in the way that, you know, Julie has her preschool, so thank you for that. Um, just a programming note, uh, we have several members of our group who need to get to a school building committee meeting very shortly. Um, and we have some citizens that have been waiting very patiently, and I wanna make sure that they have the opportunity to comment if they would like to. So I'm gonna ask Dr. Han to very speedily run through yours, and if the committee wouldn't mind holding questions for Dr. Han until we hear from our citizens, just because I don't want, I don't wanna run out of time. Is that all right with everyone?
Sure.
Okay.
The good news is, depending on being quick, because my line items don't change very much, what changes is the curriculum review cycle, that's where we allocate the funds. Uh, so the, I'll just take you quickly to the, to the changes, and one of them is already covered by curriculum review forum during the elementary update. And that is the last line, item number ninety-eight. You'll see an increase there both in benchmark assessments and forefront. The benchmark assessment reflects the uh increase for universal literacy screening. Um, you might remember we've uh got a two-year grant for that um preparation before it was requirement, now it's requirement, and the bench reflects uh that we now are charging to make sure we have that universal literacy screening benchmark. And then the forefront's already been covered in our initial discussion. Um, the last piece I just mentioned, if we look on line number nine, number ninety-five, there's a small mistake. Number five says, it says social studies, four and five says social studies twice. The line five should say world languages, um which is reflected in the justification. I'm sorry, it's not in that requested um section. But just a reminder that this year, we're finishing up as part of our curriculum review cycle, the world languages evaluation audit. And next year, we'll be starting social studies, which is why you see um the focus of those two departments covered in something for a few um line items. That's about it.
Thank you for your reference.
Yeah.
Um, and we'll, we can come back to questions about that if we want to.
Yeah, I can, I'll abbreviate. I was gonna mention a few others, but they're smaller, so let me sit by high points. So one of our bigger challenges this year is uh the trans- regular transportation, which is yellow bus transportation. We have a, as you can see in your uh your um comprehensive under central services, do a seventeen percent increase on our yellow bus contract. That's made up of me projecting four percent last year, it came in at eight point three. Um, an increase of uh four percent this year, and then a drop-off in fee collections of forty thousand dollars. Um, yeah, that was what we're anticipating for next year. So those, couple those together, and it's a seventeen percent increase, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately for our yellow bus contract. The um athletics, um we're recommending a ten thousand dollar increase for athletic transportation. Again, I think Ron Dow can get more into this when he, he presents to you guys for the athletics, but you'll see that those costs have gone up just like the regular yellow bus contract. Um, and then the, we've had some increases on school board insurance of fifteen thousand and some lease increases. But let me jump to buildings and grounds, because that's the other big piece. So under buildings and grounds, all our utilities are level funding with the exception of electric. Um, unfortunately, most of us know, sitting at this table, that electric rates have gone up. Um, they may have come down a bit, but they have not come down nearly to what they were originally. Um, with our new middle school, um a much more efficient net-zero building, unfortunately, it's straight electric. There is no natural gas in that building, so all of the, the um utility operations within that building will be managed by electric. So that's our budget versus a town who paid for gas in the existing buildings. So our electric budget um is up by a hundred eighty-three. So our electric budget is up by a hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred ninety dollars. So that reflects a more technol- technologically robust building that's going to draw on a lot more electric. And I think they, the designers were upfront about that initially. But what we're facing now is an increase in rates coupled with a more technologically advanced building, which resulted in a hundred eighty-three thousand dollar increase to our budget for electric. We were pursuing solar, we continue to pursue that. I think that it's really critical that that happens, but unfortunately, it has not been able to, to manifest itself at this point. So that's what we're facing in electrical increases. So if you go back to, just a quick one, if you go back to your consolidated page in your books, you will see that it mirrors basically the comprehensive that our goods and service budget is up twenty-three point nine percent, reflecting what Dr. Quillie mentioned and some of the other highlights that I mentioned as well, the cost of goods and service increasing. And then the salaries, again, extremely low, given the history of our district and salary increases due to a large attrition number of seven hundred thousand dollar increase, which is one point five percent increase. So again, overall, our budget is, we are requesting a two point four million dollar increase, which is four and a half percent increase year over year, which is comparable to the last few years of budget increases.
Okay, so we'll pause there. Thank you, citizens who have joined us this evening. Are any of you interested in making a public comment? Mr. Shay?
Dr. Shay?
Come on up.
Why don't?
Where am I going?
Right next to David.
I just wanted to thank you as a Elm Street parent, a Johnson parent, and a high school parent. I appreciate the input that you guys have. I'm on the finance committee, so I like to hear the deliberation that goes on. Mike, I might have some questions later about the white buses. I heard some rumors about a booster club, but I assume that was kind of what Mr. Dowd is going to get into later, so. But other than that, I just appreciate everyone providing their input and I enjoy it again, so, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you taking such an interest and, and doing your homework.
All my practices got canceled, I wouldn't miss it.
Anyone else?
I do have a question.
Okay.
My name is Kristin Bowden, I'm a parent of a junior in the cross-country traffic field program. And my questions more stem to the presentation that sounds like Ron Dowd will be presenting the school committee. Is that something that the boosters organizations can be part of that meeting or is that a closed meeting?
So Mr. Dowd will be presenting at an open school committee meeting. It will be noticed as part of the agenda, anybody is welcome to attend and anybody is welcome to offer citizens' comments.
Great, great. We will definitely show up at that time because we have a lot of questions just relating to that specifically.
Right, and I might suggest, if there are things that you're hoping to hear as part of Mr. Dowd's presentation, you could contact him ahead of time and say, these are some questions and we don't know whether or not they'll be raised. And he may be able to incorporate some of the responses or some of them may already be part of the presentation.
We actually did, he was kind enough to meet with us prior to the winter break. So he is aware of our concerns and so we pretty much align with what we're asking for and hoping to achieve for 2025, so.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here.
Appreciate the time.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a couple more minutes. If anybody wants to go back to Dr. Han or, or Mr. Frisch's comments on their budgets. I have, go ahead, Mrs. Galavan.
Yeah, you can go.
Well, I just had a question about, Mike, I know that you mentioned the pursuing solar deal. That it's been many, many months trying to, to move that through. And I'm just curious if there's anything we can do on our end to signal our, our strong belief that that is something that needs to happen sooner rather than later to help offset some of these costs.
So I thought we would be at this crossroads, to be honest with you, that we would be facing these large increases without the solar. So the attorney right now for the town is working on an RFP to put this out to bid, because they were not satisfied with the current vendor we've been negotiating with, which you don't have to put it out to RFP because it's already been negotiated. They are revisiting that original vendor now. So there's dialogue going on. I don't have an update yet, but there may be progress there or it goes out to an RFP and we see who bids on it. But I would say just stay tuned at this point because there's a lot happening now. Although it's taken a long time to get to this point, it won't help us obviously in this budget. But I just think it's, I can portray how important it is to offset probably half of the cost of the middle school electric would be done through solar. So.
That's a big, that's significant.
It is, right. Thank you.
Mr. Buckley and then Mrs. Galavan.
Well, same, same, same subject. On the scope of the RFP, are we looking at the original scope we, we went out with or are we including WMS in that? You know, that was like second tier. So would it, would it be just for a solar vendor to do the first wave of a project or?
It would be the three initial projects and then the middle school would be a separate project.
Okay.
So it would, and probably wind up with the same one. Because it's a PPA with that individual group.
Okay, yeah.
So it just makes sense to expand it to the middle school tuition.
So my questions are around electricity also. I'm trying to figure out the right words to say here. If we want to make, make that happen. I guess I'm frustrated with the fact that it's, it doesn't, doesn't seem to be prioritized the way it should. So one of the things that, that I know is we have an insurance advisory committee. People who help advise when, when there's decisions to be made about insurance. Is it for lack of the right people at the table? Or is it hard for you to answer that, Mike? It's hard for you to answer that, sorry. I, I just feel like maybe it's, it's something that we need to bring up when we meet with the other two boards on Thursday night to say, you know, we're, we're losing out on important opportunities. We will do any of the work that we need to do. But this, this extra, I, it's a lot of money that we could be, that we could be recouping if we were, were in a position to do it. The other question.
Well, just a brief one, I don't know if you're going to move on. The one thing I would just say is that there's a lot going on building-wise in the town, right? We've been dedicating a massive amount of resources to this middle school and high school now and a lot of the building projects going on that I think solar was on people's radar, but it just didn't rise to the level it should have risen to. Because there's just so much that everyone can do. I think now, when you look at it and the costs associated with it and the struggles that it's going to be to get that money within our budget, I think that that awareness is now on the forefront and that, that will drive, hopefully, this final step to get to an, an agreement with a vendor who will do the solar for us.
Okay, that's encouraging. My other question is, we're heating by electricity and that means that the town side has a savings in heat. Do you have a sense of, of what that savings is or is that a question for them?
It's about, well, the challenge is for middle school, the original one, will be level.
Right.
And there's no need for a budget there because the building's gone. Johnson Middle School is still going to be there and needs to be heated. That would be done off the rental income. In theory, that's where the plans are going, but all this is very new. So looking at probably fifty thousand approximately, that would be gas savings that we could utilize in our budget because the town doesn't need it in their budget. I'm estimating, but roughly that amount, that would be surplus arguably in their budget.
Yeah, because we have a source of funding to heat Johnson because that's built into the agreement with the, the collaboratives.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, the utilities are going to be offset by the rental income, in part.
Okay. Okay.
Well, do you know, true, on the same, subject of sunshine factories, which I think.
Which you are one.
Which I am one. And unfortunately, I have a tremendous amount of experience in this area. I would just really stress as we, as we have these dialogues. I know you did a lot of work to adequately examine every flat surface, basically, that we, we could put something on. And I know you came up with, with something, a proposal, that kind of first wave I talked about a moment ago, that you thought was, was very doable. But I guess I would encourage in your conversations associated with the town side, you to telegraph this board's desires, especially mine, to aggressively look at that kind of second phase of the middle school. And then I know there were some other places that were sort of on the bubble, that were good, good, perhaps not as viable, but may have been viable, taken as part of a larger project. Perhaps a pha- there's a phase three where if we can get a few yards here, here and there. Obviously, interconnection agreements are, are an important piece with, with the utility. But I think it, it bears kind of, looking at, I was, as we were talking, I was kind of looking over my notes and your presentation from before and there were some, some other schools that obviously, all post-rot's great, they got that giant roof. It's, it's directly in sun for much of the day. It's a great river generator, it's a great solar generating area likewise. The new middle school, nice big flat roof, as well as, as Johnson, obviously that. I think with the Johnson piece, did we have, did we move away from the top of the roof of Johnson?
Because of the, the uncertainty of the building, we moved away. Could you put solar ray on there? Absolutely.
And so I think to that point though, as the building becomes more and more certain as to where we're going with it and we're not going to knock it down, it seems like we're going to rent it out. I think there's, there's no reason to not re- reinvigorate that conversation as well. And obviously, we're at a critical time where we miss the high-water mark of incentives, but there are still a tremendous amount of incentives out there that kind of couple with some of the electrification incentives we're chasing in HVAC and other things. So I, I would just, I know you've done so much work on this and I know you've looked at everything, but I think especially as we talk with our, our colleagues in town, it'd be great to get that sort of first phase done in, in the next few months. But I, I would urge you to just blow right into the second and third and reexamine everything and try to wrap everything else up as well and see if we can't take a bite out of that, a hundred and eighty-three going forward.
I agree with you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, we know, first of all, thank you all for being here and thank you for all the work you put into your very thoughtful budgets. We know that student needs have certainly not decreased or stayed low from FY24 and yet we have to do what we have to do. We still have some work ahead of us, for sure. But I think this conversation was really fruitful. Thank you all for being here. And I will entertain the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Galavan, second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Galavan, second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.